Does anybody else need an agenda? We'll leave some right over here.
Welcome to our on-board meeting. James James Jackson, long time, longtime member of the Town of Warke right there. Welcome everyone. A couple of public hearings still, so we're first going to start with supervisor town budget. Budget for fiscal year 2023, the motion to open a hearing. Thank you. On my behalf, I am proud, can you read the announcement?
Notice is here by giving that the town budget is a town of Warke for the fiscal year beginning of January 1st, 2023 has been completed and filed in the office of the town clerk at 99 Tower Drive, Rock Hill, where is available for inspection. Please take further notice that the preliminary budget contains the following proposed salaries for elected officials. Supervisor, 103,833.29. First deputy supervisor, 2,342.42. Second deputy supervisor, 2,266. Town clerk, 69,275.43. Town clerk members, 16,231. Town council members. 16,231.09. Town justices, 48,646.10. Receiver taxes, 28,665.72. Please take further notice that a public hearing will be held in the town where the town of Warke on 27th. At 7:25 PM at the Warke Town Hall regarding review and consideration of the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2023. Any resident of the Town of Warke is entitled to be heard concerning the preliminary budget at such public hearing. Copies of the budget are available for review at Warke Town Hall. 99 Tower Drive Building A, the Town of Warke will make every effort to assure the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities, anyone requiring special assistance and more reasonable accommodations to contact the town clerk by order of the town where the town of Warke, we surrender as the town clerk.
Thank you.
All those necessary rights of the notice of public hearing is published and posted in accordance to the New York State law and the Town Code.
Thank you. We'll start with the audience. Please, three minutes. Come up, state your name, any address.
Noni Kelly, head lady of it. I just want to comment on the water and sewer, I understand you're raising the rates again. Fine, raise them. I will point out for the second or third time that, uh, not on. I would just point out that we continue to get letters saying our water is no good. And it's okay to drink it, but it might cost something. And, um, you know, I think the town should really send out something, a newsletter to, you know, the residents that say what you're doing. I know you're doing something, but you're not sending it out and communicating it anyway. So I would just like to put that on the record again, for probably the third time.
Thank you. Zoom, anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand. Anyone in the audience?
Yes, hi. Hi, my name is Armando Pelleri, I'm the president of Hillside Buildings Condominium Board. And this is the first time we've gotten a letter about the water in that complex that we know of. And even the postcard is the first time that I've received that ever as a homeowner there. So, so I kind of, kind of concerned, there's 112 units there, people are very concerned about the water. And notification, we haven't been notified. And even, uh, we're, we're addressing the, the town board as well as for, uh, proposals of new buildings. There's a gas station going on the corner of Gilson Turnpike and Loop 211. We never got notification that that was going in. And we're very concerned as homeowners, and I'm concerned as a president of a board that these people aren't being notified so they can voice their opinions. So we're very concerned about the water, I believe this is like four or five years that it's going on where the water is still not resolved, the water issue. Where it's not drinkable, it's drinkable, it's not drinkable. I notice a lot of you have bottled water. You're not drinking the town water, so, uh, you know, we have concerns, right? And I think at some point we have to really address what those concerns are and what, I know you're working on it, but five years later, we're still working on it and people, especially elderly people who can't drink it, now have to buy bottled water, right? And that's an expense to them with everything else, with all the inflation costs going up, now they have expenses. So I, I think it's only fair that, I know you're working on it, but something really should be done more quickly than five years that you're working on this. And that, you know, elderly people can't drink this water, and I have a mother who is 83 years old, she can't drink the water. Yet we gotta go buy bottled water for her, and we're paying for water that we should be able to drink, right? Not only drink, but it's going to waste, we're getting charged both ways, so. I, I took up my three minutes, but I think that the town needs to be more diligent and working faster in this result.
Thank you. Supervisor by name, um, because it's coming up and, um, a lot of people ask that question, I'm going to, um, make my statement then ask Mr. Ross here to expand on it. There's an area of the town, the way it's written, if there is an issue with a certain area in the town with the water and the water treatment in that section, we're not allowed by law, in, in, Mr. Ross, correct me, to just say that area is infected or had issues, we have to send a notice to everyone in the town. And we can't say it's not your area, it's this area. So, uh, I would ask Mr. Ross here to expand on that and, and what those notices actually say. And it is something that we should begin to make more information and more clarity so we can lessen the concerns of, of the residents without getting those notice.
Okay. I was gonna have you speak during, uh, the rates, but.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Mr. Supervisor Councilman. The issue at hand, of course, is trihalomethane, haliocytic acids, uh, byproducts of chlorination. We have four sample locations in the town that are mandated by New York State uh, and the Orange County Health Department where we sample the water, uh, for trihalomethanes and haliocytic acids. We have also gone out and we've done quality control samples in numerous other areas in the town. What happens is, is with the expanse area of the town and the longer quote unquote runs of water main, we have to add chlorine to the water for disinfection. A byproduct of chlorination is trihalomethanes and haliocytic acids, which again, consumed in copious amounts over extended period of time, can cause health concerns. There is nothing wrong with the water, you can drink the water. People drink water out of bottles for 100% convenience. The water that's in that bottle meets less standards than the water coming out of your tank. And if you don't believe me, I can provide you with the information. The employees, the men and women of the Town of Warke Water Sewer Department have been working diligently to try to solve the problem. The issue is, is every time we get close, they move the bar. The, the, uh, action level for total trihalomethanes and haliocytic acids over the past four years has progressively gotten less, less, and less, which I understand. The issue is, our system, we come off wells, we don't have the benefit of a reservoir. We're in a reservoir type system, a lot of the organics precipitate out. When you're pumping water out of the ground, it has a lot of organics. Organics and chlorine, when they mix, they create trihalomethanes and haliocytic acids. We're certainly not ignoring the issue, we're working on the issue, we're working with our engineers on the issues. We're working on new treatment processes. The issue is, is that over time, these things will build up in the main, we do a semi-annual flushing. Over the period of the summer, we had the drought issue, we couldn't afford to waste the water for flushing. If in fact there was something wrong with the water, and you could not drink it, you would have been notified immediately. The letter that you just received, those samples were taken in August. By the time we take the samples, return them to the Health Department, they read the sample report, they authorize the letter that we can send out, the verbiage in the letter has to be authorized, we're in a Health Department. A one or two month period takes passes. If you look at that letter, it'll tell you the date of the sample on it, and we're gonna say, why the heck didn't they send me this letter on August 28th and not, you know, October 1st? Again, all part of the process, not putting the blame on anyone, that's for darn sure, not passing the buck down to anyone. But at the end of the day, the water is safe to drink, if the water was not safe to drink, you'd have been notified immediately that the water is not safe to drink. Unfortunately, the federal government, the EPA keeps moving the bar, keeps moving the, what do they say, moving the goalposts, and the limits keep getting less, less, and less. What's going to happen, it's going to get to the point where we're going to have to do tertiary treatment of the water, which will be extremely expensive, however, we're trying to prevent that by adding different types of orthophosphates, adding different types of poagulants to capture the trihalomethanes, hold on to them, and then that way there, they won't precipitate out into your drinking water. But we are working on it diligently, and like I said, the, the matter of drinking water out of a bottle, 100% convenience. I am telling you, the water that's in a bottle of water meets less standards than your drinking water. You're gonna go to Anaffor, you're gonna go to Shoprate, you're gonna see that machine on the side of the wall that you can fill your water bottle with, right? At the end of the day, that's Town of Warke Water, there's not a 3 million gallon tank behind Shoprate. That's Town of Warke Water, what they do is they put it through reverse osmosis filter, which is extremely expensive to do. That's why you're buying it at that amount, we're selling it to you for $2.95 for 1,000 gallons, they're selling it to you for a dollar and a quarter a bottle. So figure out the math, but at the end of the day, we are working on it, we're not ignoring it. It's an ongoing issue, we're well aware of it, we're doing everything in our power to solve the problem as soon as possible.
Thank you, thank you.
Can I say one more thing that I have? Chlorine sewer is kind of my thing too, in my background from school. I think you need to understand that a disinfectant byproduct, right, is better to have than not have because it's killing anything that could be bad for you bacteria wise. You got a pool, they use chlorine in, and there's three leaves that go off the tree in there, there's gonna be more trihalomethanes in that pool that will be drinking water. So understand that it's not a, um, a serious health risk at the action level. And if you look at our letters, we're really just exceeding the action level. I was just trying to look it up, but it used to be 8, I believe, right? Our, our, uh, our LRAA, which is the locational running annual average, is what you have to report, which is an average of those four locations over time. Our most recent one was .86, and the limit is .82. Right, so I mean, we're almost, or we don't even have to report it, but the way the verbiage states the law, that if you exceed this number, then you need to send out the letters. The other thing you need to really think about is, it's not just one water system that the town has. So, because we have to pump the water like over here in the storage tanks, keep the pressure and then send it downstream, if those tanks have any kind of accumulation of organic matter in them, that will then mix with the higher chlorine level if you had to put it into transfer further down line, which will then make the trihalomethanes, like Washington Heights had a big problem, we just spent a couple million dollars for doing their tanks. We did a couple million dollars on these tanks a couple of years ago, so. It's not like it's a switch that we can fix, it's obviously a process, and because it's so dynamic and there's so many, um, variables that have to be addressed, the town is certainly doing what we can. I mean, to spend four or five million dollars in two years just to try and fix trihalomethanes and haliocytic acids, which again, a disinfectant byproduct, not something wrong with the water, not similar to what you've read in the paper about other municipalities that made the water undrinkable because of, you know, a chemical in it that would be bad for you. And this is something, if you have organics and you have chlorine and you let it mix, the organic material dies, and that's where you're getting the trihalomethanes, so. You know, we certainly are doing what we can, we are spending money, we're throwing money out, and we are working with engineers. Um, I think you guys are correct, maybe we could provide a little more information to you in the letter as to maybe what we're doing and the things we're trying, because that might, you know, ease your, your concerns a little bit, you know, if you knew a little more. So that's something we can certainly work on absolutely. But again, like the commissioner said, the water's never been not drinkable, because if it was, you'd have to know immediately. That we knew, right, I mean, I know that that happened, like I said, in another municipality a little closer to the Hudson over there. And, you know, as soon as they found it out, boom, everybody was not drinking the water. You know, and they had to make other arrangements, this is not the case here, so just, you know, please keep that in mind.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone on Zoom? For the budget. Anyone in the audience? For the budget?
No, no, no.
Has to be on the budget. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience for the budget? One on Zoom? Anyone else in the audience for the budget? Motion to close the public hearing on the town budget, supervisor town budget for fiscal year 2023. Right. Second. Yep, Councilman Coin, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Make the motion to open the proposed town senate assessment role for fiscal year 2023. Second. Second back, Councilman Meyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Anna Clark?
Please take further notice that public hearing will be held by the town board in Town of Warke on 27th, 2022, at 7:25 PM at Warke Town Hall, 99 Tower Drive. With respect to the proposed 2023 benefit assessment role in the special, special districts of the town. Any resident of Town of Warke is entitled to be heard concerning the proposed rate increase at such public hearing. Copies of the benefit assessment role are available for review at Warke Town Hall, 99 Tower Drive, Building A. Town of Warke will make every effort to ensure that the hearing is successful and will increase its visibility. Anyone requiring special assistance and more reasonable accommodations to contact the town clerk. By order of the town where the town of Warke, we surrender as the town clerk.
Thank you.
And supervisor, for the record. The notice of public hearing for the 2022 benefit assessment role in the special district of the town was published and posted in accordance to the New York State law and the Town Code.
Mr. Ross, you want to take this?
Sure. Uh, in regards to the benefit assessment, the, uh, if you live within one of the affected districts, special district of the town, which include the Lorelei Water District and Consolidated Water District Number One, Consolidated Sewer District, all lighting districts, if your community has a lighting district, draining, drainage district, if your community has a drainage district, and our town law 200, which is basically the North Gallery Drive, uh, district. You received a postcard in the mail saying there would be a public hearing this evening on the benefit assessment fees. The benefit assessment fees in all of those districts, um, for the sixth consecutive year, will not have any increases. So there will not be any increases in any of the benefit assessment fees for any of those districts. Specifically, the largest ones, of course, are Consolidated Water District, we're gonna Consolidated Sewer District. The water, uh, Consolidated Water District budget is 4,138,505.58. And 1,469,735.58 of that is raised by benefit assessment fees. If you own a house, a residential home in the town, uh, you're paying a flat rate, an annual flat charge, of either 17.50 or $10, uh, for your property or, uh, for your benefit assessment fees. The calculation and the, uh, funding mechanism that was put in place back in the late 60s when we first started Consolidated Water and Sewer Districts, what it did, it put the amount, or the, the largest amount and the burden on the commercial properties of the town. And that still happens to this day. Uh, over the course of the past year, we've had the benefit of some major projects closing out in the town. Once a project starts, when it comes to fruition or receives a final C O, then they are assessed the benefit assessment fee. On the water side alone, based on several large projects in the town with no increase, there's a 98,590.50 increase in benefit assessment income. On the sewer side, again, with no increase to any of the property owners, homeowners, commercials, et cetera, just new construction, new COs closed out, there's a plus of 129,664. So that, those are real good numbers, we like to see an increase over time. Typically, it'll, you know, it'll land in the 30 to 50,000 dollar range on annual basis, and that, that's what allows us to keep our rates at a sustainable level. We're gonna talk in a minute about water and sewer rates, and I'll explain, um, why we are, um, you know, fucking increase water and sewer rates by a nickel. But, um, the benefit assessment fees, if you're in any of those districts, um, you're not gonna have any increase on your tax bill. When you look at your tax bill, scroll down to the bottom, this is your town, town, town and county property tax bill. You'll see your fire district bill on there, you'll typically see the throw library bill on there, depending on what school district you live in. And then you'll see whether or not if you're actually in a water and or sewer and or lighting district. That's where you'll find out that information. But there's no increases on any of those, uh, special districts issued.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll start with Zoom, anybody on Zoom, raise your hand? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Make a motion to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we got a public, I make a motion to open a public hearing on establishing a town and water sewer gate for fiscal year 2023. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioner, you up again?
Please take further notice that I've got a public hearing will be held by the town where the Town of Warke on 27th, 2022, at 7:25 PM, Warke Town Hall, 99 Tower Drive. With respect to the proposed change in the rates for the water and sewer usage for properties within and outside the boundaries of the Town Water and Sewer Districts for the calendar year 2023 as follows. Water in district currently $2.90 per thousand, proposed $2.95 per thousand, 1.75% increase. Water out of district, $5.80 per thousand, proposed rate $5.90 per thousand. Percentage of an increase is .9. Sewer in district, $3.10 per thousand currently, proposed $3.15 per thousand. Percentage of an increase 1.75. Sewer out of district, $6.20 per thousand currently, proposed $6.30 per thousand. Percentage of an increase 2.85. Construction or temporary water is $20 per thousand gallons. Any resident of Town of Warke is entitled to be heard concerning the proposed rate increase at such public hearing. The Town of Warke will make every effort to ensure that the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities, anyone requiring special assistance and more reasonable accommodations to contact the town clerk. By order of the town where the Town of Warke, we surrender as the town clerk.
That was a very solid question, probably important to the New York State law and Town Code.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Actually.
Commissioner?
Yep, real quick, so currently the water and sewer rates in the Town of Warke are $2.90 per thousand for water and $3.10 per sewer. Uh, we're looking at a nickel increase on either side, water and sewer, uh, those are proposed rates. As I spoke about before, the funding mechanism, the benefit assessment fees, somewhere in the low 30% uh, of that large budget and figure is derived from water rates on the water side, and somewhere in the neighborhood of 40% of that water and sewer, or the sewer budget fee is derived from sewer rates. You're charged, whether the water goes through your beater, so we charge a one, you know, 10,000 gallons of water go through the meter, you're charged for 10,000 gallons of water, 10,000 gallons of sewer. Uh, about eight years ago, the town undertook a water and sewer master plan uh, with the engineers at the time for the town, KC Engineering. And by increasing this nickel, uh, amount each year, number one, it allows us to keep in line and continue with our water sewer master plan funding mechanism. And also, through our, uh, funding mechanism, our water rates still are literally the lowest in the Hudson Valley. You know, we, you know, to compare, if you went to the city of Middletown, you're paying over $20,000 for both water and sewer. Where in a town of Warke, uh, your combined rate is $6.10. We talk about out of district users, the only out of district user currently in the Town of Warke, we have an agreement with the Town of Wayleyanda, um, the new gas station and strip mall that's at the Roundabout on Nelson Town Road. Uh, we actually sell water to Wayleyanda for that facility. We have another agreement with Wayleyanda for proposed development on Golfman's Road, but as of right now, there's only one customer that's paying out of district rates. Uh, we do sell a lot of construction and temporary water, uh, $20 per thousand, those are folks that come out to our filter plant, fill up a tanker, and we sell that water if somebody's filling a pool with it or something like that, but that's the $20 per thousand gallon rate, so, uh, you know, we try to, uh, you know, we try to sell that as best we can. But again, we have shut that down, over the summer, we shut it down because of the drought that we were going through. But, uh, it's a minimal increase, um, that's gonna assist us in our ultimate, uh, game plan of our water and sewer master plan going forward.
Thank you. Have anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this? Anyone on Zoom? Then I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I wanted to add one statement along with, um, Commissioner Ross's statement. When we did that master plan study, the forecast was identifying those projects 10 and 15 years ahead of us that would need major funding. We've seen other municipalities where things go wrong and they're not ready for it, and, and now they're trying to find funds to make these major repairs. Hopefully, we've done our due diligence, we've identified these major projects in the master plan 10 and 15 years ahead. The other thing we found in the analysis and calculations back then is that if we were to increase, continue the increase of the water and sewer rates a nickel a year for the next 10 years, we would still be cheaper in 10 years than what Middletown is today, um, going forward. So, we try and make it where it's still affordable for the residents and still not an impact to those major projects that would need improvement to, to those infrastructures to give water and sewer distance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing really, if you think about it, you heard the commissioner say that we get our water from wells, right, so we don't have reservoirs. This means that our groundwater is our water supply. Our wells that we have are actually pretty shallow too, um, and they're set up in sandy ground and not in traction fed rock, so. They are certainly affected by droughts like we have this summer. So one of the things this allows us to do is spend a little extra money, save it, save it, save it, and now look for additional water sources that we're currently doing on our house plan. So this provides funding so we can stay on top of, should we have a longer drought, we'll have sufficient water for the residents to still use, um, you know, and go forward. So this is the kind of planning that the town does to take care of you down the road. And again, a nickel is, I, I know it sounds like a lot on 1,000 gallons, it's still 10 cents, but with every user that adds up to a significant amount for the town to use, again, like this in this case, with the traditional wells for water supply, so just keep in mind, that's really what it's for.
Thank you. So about, can you state your name and address, up to the mic, please?
The town of Warke, I'm Young, I'm a student of college. And, uh, my question is, um, if part of this one, um, passes. And, uh, my question is, um, it's proposition one, um, assets in November election. You ready to seek some red money?
I'm not sure what's proposition one, man. This is a public hearing for, um, I'm not sure, not aware of the proposition, man.
Supervisor, there, there is a proposition that's going to be on the, um, November ballot, which is, um, it's a clean water fund is what we're talking about for New York State. There is a tremendous amount of money out there that's available. Um, we always go after grant monies. Um, we're going to talk a little bit later, a couple of projects that we're talking about. Um, right now, uh, not specific to water and sewer, but probably sixty percent water and sewer. The town is, uh, has opened right now about nine million dollars in grants. We've been extremely, uh, successful with our grant writer, Michelle Baker, through what's called D F C, the Environmental Facilities Corp. And you'll see that noted in the, um, yeah, the, the proposition, uh, that's on the ballot this year. But yes, you, you can be assured that we are very aggressive when it comes to, uh, quote unquote, free money and grant money. Thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Then I make a motion to close the public hearing. Right? All in favor? Thank you. Next, uh, I've always liked to honor people who in our community who have done, uh, or who are doing, uh, a tremendous job to the community at large. And when this was brought to my attention, um, this young lady here in the town of Warthill, um, opened a store. And she donated wigs, uh, cancer patients. And again, it was brought to my attention that those, it's a beautiful thing to do to give to someone. Um, and we're going to honor her tonight. You know, people watching the western face part of this child, like, you know, all types of questions. God right there, this is the best part. Able to recognize individuals in our community making a difference. And, um, creating a small business, and that's, me, that's the best. Um, I know we got public participation, but I want to skip that. We'll come right back to that. Um, in the, in town hall today, we have Senator James Scootis and Assemblywoman Alina Dunther, who are going to make a presentation. They're here in the back, so we're going to have them step up and make the presentation.
I just want to thank you very much. I'm a registered nurse. And what you're doing is incredible. And as a woman to a woman, we really appreciate it. It's amazing.
Thank you. As everybody's aware, um, the town of Warthill, the park, you know, Veterans Memorial Park. And it has a war on it. And to me, um, I take great pride that we have this war in the town of Warthill. We, we are all here today, sitting here, each and every one of us, to be able to express our opinion because of the many women who have made the ultimate sacrifice. We hear that all the time, ultimate sacrifice. But to me, it's important that we as a town recognize that. And I felt that it was important for the town to support. You know, due to talking, now we got to do the war. And with the help of the senator and the assemblywoman, we were able to get this done. We were able to get the funding to complete this war. And I'm happy to say they have given the town to complete this war, hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This war. We have, have to put our best. They are the ones going out there and went out there to give us the right. People want to be in this country. Why? It's the greatest country in the world. It is. Me, a young man from the Bronx, to be sitting up here as a town supervisor, everyone sitting out there to be able to come up here and express your opinion. It's a, it's had to be where you got to be humble and recognize that this is the greatest country. Uh, with that, I would ask to speak, who has happened to be the laser for, uh, the war and written the best.
Thank you. Um, I got to tell you, I don't think anybody's happier, maybe Mike is, about this. Mike started this project twenty-six years ago. Um, approached me a year and a half ago, uh, having some trouble raising money because of COVID. Uh, a lot of the way Mike would raise money and he still do it today is through, uh, selling the packs, T-shirts, coin drops, all those, those kinds of things, close contact with people and we couldn't do that during the pandemic, right? But, um, nonetheless, these section, well, this section at the time, you could make it a one on water, uh, was coming and so was the bill. So, um, I called Louisa. Right? Rachel? That's right. And, um, we put together a small committee, start raising some money along with Mike. Uh, the committee grew. Rosie, Rosie's husband Larry, Carlos, um, Doris, Hector. Well, am I, am I getting? Well, then Leron D came in and helped out, um. Tom Lovelace, uh, I mean, so many people pitched in to help out. Um, when I took this on, when we took this on, we were thinking ten-year project. I mean, these, these sections cost anywhere between eight thousand dollars for the little guy and eighteen-five for the big guy. And there's twenty-one sections. You know, you do the math. That's just, my God, how much money do you have to raise, right? So, okay, you know, work hard for ten years, we'll get this done.
A lot of T-shirts.
Yeah. A lot of T-shirts, a lot of standing on the corner begging for money. And, um, you know, we did well, we did great. Uh, we have three sections coming that we still owe money on. We, uh, we took on a forty-six thousand dollar bill uh, to raise in one year. We're down to twelve thousand dollars and I'll be talking about the dinner later on. Hope everyone can come. Um, but when I caught wind of this, that, that this money was coming our way, I mean, it's, it's, it's mind blowing, you know, um. I know Senator Scootis doesn't represent us yet or what have you, but uh, Assemblywoman Dunther, she, she's been terrific to the, the town for many years. And, um, again, I, I don't know what to say, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Guess what? Ten-year project just turned into, I don't know, basically two, right? You got to order the pieces. By the way, these sections, they come from a mine in South Africa. They're sent over to, uh, Vermont where they're cut and to size, polished on five sides and then sent down to the town of Warthill to be installed. So, um, you know, what we order out of this hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, these twelve remaining pieces, they're not going to be here until probably,
Next year.
Well, next year.
In May.
May twenty-third, I doubt it. I doubt it. Because we still got to go through the bidding process and all that. Uh, anyway, it's going to be a little while and we'll have a big party on that day, that's for sure. Um, but I wanted to say thank you because you just took a lot of work off my plate, you know, as well as everybody else on the committee. So, uh, I really appreciate it and, um, you want to, you want to speak? Yes, let Rosie go real fast. Thank you.
So first and foremost, I wanted to say thank you. Thank you so very much. As a veteran, I am very, very, very proud to be part of not only this wonderful community, but being part of Legion Post eleven eighty-one and being on the committee on the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Committee. So we wanted to say thank you to all you guys because you guys really worked hard to make this happen for us. And it's been a long, long road. We just want to give you guys the board a little something from us to thank you. Not a lie because there's nothing in the budget. You know? If I could have Mike and please, then Amanda Scali, um, Carlos, our veterans, please, come on up.
Thank you so much. Eric Johnson, thank you. Where's my Louisa? Louisa, get up here.
I would like Mr. Wolf, right? We talked about everything, but I don't think. George, thank you so much. Thank you guys. And thank you again for everything that you do, Commander Scali. Thank you for always supporting us also. And I want to give a real big hand of applause to our Purple Heart recipients, Vietnam Veteran Mike O.
Not today, not to the council, but. Well, I'm, I'm very pleased to be here in Warthill today. And, um, uh, the reason that, um, this happened and I was able to get the funding for this important is Mike. Mike and I have known each other for at least twelve, thirteen years. And Mike's really been working hard for all the years that I've known him. So, uh, it was my great pleasure to help in getting Mike's dream come true. And this truly is your dream. It was, Mike. And Mike served in Vietnam and he's an amazing guy. He never stopped working to have this come to fruition. So I think we need a big round of applause. These young girl, when I watched those in Vietnam and, you know, we would turn the TV on every, every night and see some of the young men that lost their lives to, you know, keep the freedom that we have in the United States. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your service to your country. You will never be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I, I'm also glad to be here and, you know, I was the Assembly for six years with Amy Dunther. We served together. I, she was always a tough act to follow then and she's still a tough act to follow now. I, I've been in the Senate for four years. Warthill's new to me. We had redistricting this year and so I've been in the community the past, uh, number of months. And when we learned about, uh, this effort, this was a no-brainer. And I wanted to partner with Amy and, and we did. I, and let me just tell you, I, from a personal standpoint, what's, uh, what's supporting our veterans means for me in, in my line of work. I'm not a veteran. A veteran to my family, but my father's side of the family came here from Greece. My dad was born, born in Greece. He came here as a teenager, his parents. And they came from a very small farming village up in the mountains in western Greece. And my grandparents, his parents, uh, were children during World War Two. And some of you may know that Greece, just like much of that part of Eastern Europe, was occupied uh, by the, uh, by the Axis forces. First, the Italians invented Nazis, uh, in Greece. And one of the really cleanest things that happened in Greece was, uh, this great famine that followed the occupation. And the reason for the famine is because the Nazis stole all the food from the farms in Greece to send back and feed Germans themselves. And there were hundreds of thousands of deaths in Greece from this famine and especially in the farming villages. And so. And so my grandma, for example, uh became an orphan, lost both parents to famine within three weeks. That's how bad it was in Greece. And it was the United States forces, among others, who liberated Greece later on in that war and allowed my family to eventually come here to the United States. And we've been here ever since. I, and I, no, look, I'm here because of American veterans. And so uh over the past ten years, the legislature, I've done whatever I could to give back, to support our local veterans here. This is the latest example. I cannot wait to see this wall completed next year. Uh it's gonna be a spectacular, marvelous wall here in the town of Walkeel that is befitting of the veterans uh here in this community. So uh on behalf of everyone who represents and certainly alongside uh Assemblywoman Gunther uh and our partners here in the town council and the supervisor, uh congratulations and thank you for always.
And your photo of everybody?
Carlos.
You sign it back and bring it back. You did more? Maybe she's telling.
Thanks.
That's right. Thank you very much, everybody.
You're very welcome. Thank you so much.
Nobody will, I reuse it.
Great presentation. Again, this, this is what we as a town need to do, work when important is mistake and get things done. And, you know, to me, it feels good to see Mike smiling. There was a, a hilarious laugh, unique laugh. Walked in on many of them, and I'd like to see him um smile. And I'm glad that um what, what our partners mistake, we're able to do this for Mike and going out, so.
Hi, everyone. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have public, this patient, three minutes on agenda items only. And I want to come up. Gender item down. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we move on. Madam Clark, do we have any correspondence?
I do not, sir.
Okay. Then we'll start with the resolutions.
Resolution, the town board and town of Walkeel directing the town assessor to forward to the Orange County Tax Department a list of town properties to be assessed for non-payment of refuse for annual fees. Therefore, hereby resolved, the town board and Walkeel hereby directs the town assessor to forward to the Orange County Tax Department and the Orange County Legislature, the tax list of town properties to be assessed for non-payment of refuse for annual fees in a total amount of five thousand fifty-one dollars and cents. With such assessments to be levied against seven properties in the unappropriate two thousand and forty-two town and county tax court. We shall state the amount of tax in a separate column in the annual rolls for the year twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second discussion. I just wanna point out that these are the unkept properties um that usually they're, they're foreclosed uh homes that people don't, the bank doesn't mow the lawn, so we send somebody out there to do so. We then bill them. If they don't pay the bill, it goes on their taxes, which is where we're at now in this process. Putting it onto their taxes. If they don't pay their taxes, well, the county makes us whole, so ultimately, we get paid for that service. So just wanted to point that out. Right, so. Yeah, they're notified, exactly. I got you. Yeah, they're, they're notified at the time that um if you don't, if you don't uh pay the bill, you will be, will be put on your taxes, so. That's the process, that's the, the point that we're at right now, setting it to the county. Um but again, if they don't pay their taxes, we will be made whole, so this money is definitely coming to account.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Seron.
Yes.
Resolution, the town board and town of Walkeel authorizing the commission of public works to advertise for bids for completion of the Western Avenue Pump Station upgrades. Resolve, the town board hereby authorizes and directs the commission of public works to solicit bids from vendors to furnish all labor, equipment and materials necessary to complete the upgrade of the Western Avenue Pump Station in accordance with the plans and specifications prepared by the town's consulting engineers. And before the resolve, the commission of public works shall report shall thereafter reports to the town board with results of said bids. Any motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Seron?
Yes.
Resolution, the town board and the town of Walkeel authorizing the commission of public works to advertise for bids for completion of the Rikowski Well, Well Field, Well Field Expansion. Resolve, the town board hereby authorizes and directs the commission of public works to solicit bids from vendors to furnish all labor, equipment and materials necessary to complete the expansion of the Rikowski Well Field in accordance with the plans and specifications prepared by the town's consulting engineers. And before the resolve, that the commission of public works shall thereafter report to the town board with the results of said bids. Any motion?
So move. Say it.
Mr. Coin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Seron?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Next, we're gonna have Councilman Comments, and we'll start on my right with Councilman Johnson.
I'm in a row. Yeah. Yeah. All right, thank you. So let me start with the Building Department. So from the month of September, um it was a hundred and sixty-two permits issued or uh written and then the certificate gets back and received completion were sixty-eight. All things collected were ninety-two thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Um the complaints, I'm gonna say are twenty-four, normally that's a much bigger number, but there's a reason for that. They are currently going to um the backlog of complaints and trying to get outstanding complaints addressed and reduce. Um that's why they're not only twenty-four, but they're doing a lot to make that happen, uh to make things more should be minor than insurance. And then they carried out nine hundred and forty-seven inspections. In uh water and sewer. As always, um you know, we have leaks. There were three service leaks that needed to be repaired. Um and one water main, water main leak needed repaired in Scottstown. And as always, the town might thank the residents for understanding why it didn't have any water, uh so we took care of those repairs. The fire hydrant flushing, still ongoing. Uh it's gonna actually finish this Sunday, the thirtieth of October. And it's possible to still see some discolored water. This is something we kinda had to wait a little bit longer this year because of the drought conditions. We didn't really have the water to flush the hydrants and clean the systems out, like you mentioned earlier, to try and get rid of any of those organics in the water, which is then mixed with chlorine, which would give you trihalomethanes. Um we completed the town, completed a portion of their flushing, and they're now in the process of repairing and servicing the hydrants. Um they try and keep extra parts on hand to get them back in service as soon as possible, because everyone knows a fire hydrant is there for a reason, right? You have a fire, and you have water accessible, and certainly gonna save lives. We don't want those down any longer than the the Orange County Health Department carried out their annual inspection. Uh everything seemed to go well, and the result, the result should be available soon. And the water and sewer departments continue to work with various contractors on projects throughout the town on a daily basis, which keeps them extra busy. I know you, you're saying we've had a lot of rainfall, rains, 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 rains. But please understand, we are still way lower than we should be in water levels when we talk about groundwater again, which is where we get our water from, in our wells. If you drive uh out to Mount Hope and you look at the reservoirs from the city of Middletown, they're literally three or four feet lower, the water level is three or four feet lower than it should be in the reservoir, which and you look at the slope of the bank, it's like, you know, fifteen feet down from where it should be. Um so we certainly don't have the water to get us back from the drought that we experienced this summer, so if we could continue to conserve water if possible, that would be great. Um can you clarify our project? We've heard you mention for many months, it's finally moving forward. Arcadis Engineering, Arcadis Engineering has reviewed and evaluated the proposals and the work has been awarded to Rapid Meter and Pump for the general construction and uh Harretola for your electrical portion. And again, this is, this is like you mentioned before, when we have a little money in our kitty that we can save and save and save, it allows us to do work like this. You know, we have to bond because it's so much, but it does give us money to move forward with it, so that's the reason for, you know, playing for the future. Um again, the department continues to work with their engineers to address the trihalomethanes and haliosetic acid issues. Operators are continuing to implement recommendations, make improvements to the subsequent process to try and correct those. Um the department has been really busy preparing um for the winter months, the colder months obviously bring a different challenge than the warmer months, so they're trying to get everything in order for that. And as always, the daily operation, both plants is a twenty-four, seven, two sixty-five, there's never a day off for our guys or gals, they do a great job. I just like to let them know that. Uh and the County Department, they are currently almost called up on the older outstanding invoices. And all departments have been extremely helpful in entering their requisitions, remitting invoices and answering questions that the department has. Uh newer staff, as everybody settles into their roles, um they're gonna be developing internal processes to mitigate errors, create segregation duties um throughout all the processes. There's still some loose ends with the auditors to get the audit completed. However, uh O'Connor Davies, Chris Pop came to present a draft by answer report to the board uh last Wednesday uh for the end of the year. And he reported that the financials looked very healthy. Uh we finished the year with a um much larger increase in fund balance than we thought we would. And that was due mainly to the um the booms pre, post-COVID. So we had the housing boom that led to mortgage tax and um things like that that were much higher than we actually planned, the, the stuff happening in the building department as well. So that was good news. Um there's still a few items outstanding, but some like that that will have significant change on the report. We cut off our water and sewer payments from last week, so the department is working with a software company to get a list of bills that will be re-levered on the town property tax bills moving forward this January. Um comments, obviously, I'd like to mention Veterans Day, um November eleventh. Obviously, this is the greatest country in the world, and there's a reason for that, and it's our veterans. Um whether they give the ultimate sacrifice, whether they service time, or whatever it is they do, they make America the best place in the world. You heard Senator Scoopus say how, you know, the country that his family was from was in, in, in need of support. Who came in and saved him? I shouldn't say saved him, who came in and made a difference, right, is America, right? So we're always, and we'll always be the best country in the world. Um I can't say thank you enough to those two individuals, Senator James Scoopus and Assemblywoman Aileen Gunther. Um when we talk about community, those two individuals understand and they represent us. They came here tonight with a check for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to help something that this town has been working on and the veterans have been working on for years. Um you know, you can't say enough positive things about those individuals. And, and you know, parties aside, when we need something and we reach out to them, they do everything they can to help this town and, and people that live in it. So, you know, I just, I have to say thank you so much to those two. I, I can't say how proud I am to work with people like that, that go across the aisle and do whatever needs to be done for the greater good. Um so I just wanna say that, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Meyer?
Early voting starts Saturday after twenty-nine. You can vote at the senior center in Mulberry House in the city of Middletown. Remember to turn over your ballots and vote for the propositions on the back of the ballot whenever you get that. Um as we enter the holiday season, it is very common for individuals who suffer from depression and substance use disorder to experience some sort of crisis. If you or somebody you know is suffering from addiction or a mental health crisis, let them know there are resources available and that they should call the Crisis Call Center, which can be accessed by dialing either three-one-one or nine-eighty. Uh a trained professional is waiting for the call. Uh this is Halloween weekend. I wanna remind everybody to be safe and keep an eye on your children. Um that's always important. Um Veterans Day is the eleventh. Uh the Elks Lodge, who are from Middletown, will be holding a service with the American Legion Post eleven eighty-one. All are welcome. I wanna thank everyone who has served our country and sacrificed so that all of us can enjoy the best that America can be. Um the Toys for Tots train, coming back to the town of Walkeel this year. And we'll be arriving in the town on December eleventh with Santa and its helpers. So come and join us on December eleventh and bring toys for those kids in need. And uh finally, the Friendly Visitor Program, uh will be having a training on Thursday, November tenth at ten AM and Tuesday, November twenty-ninth at five thirty PM. Um as you mentioned, every month, uh we need volunteers for the Friendly Visitor Program. This is a program that helps our neighbors who are in need and can't help themselves. Uh it could be as simple or as small as calling one of your neighbors uh, you know, for thirty minutes uh once a week or once a month to going out and shopping for groceries or driving them to the doctors. Um you don't have to do everything. You can, obviously, if you wanna do something small, you can do something small. If you wanna do more, you can always do more. Um this isn't one of those things where you sign up and you have to do everything. So um I encourage everybody that can uh to vote maybe an hour or two um to this uh great, great program. Uh please uh call Jewish Family Services, call myself, call Louisa and Bracia. Um any one of us can put you in touch uh and get you to the training program. We'll have uh flyers on our website as well as the Facebook pages to ensure that people have the ability to know where to sign up and when to sign up. Um that's all I have, so thank you very much, and everybody be safe.
Thank you. Valentin?
Uh thank you, Supervisor. I'll start with the Police Committee Report. Our current staffing block police department is fifty. Full-time, strong police officers. Our arrest record to date are up two point six percent of seven hundred and forty-one for the year twenty twenty-two versus seven twenty-two for the year twenty twenty-one. Uh next, Police Community Council meeting will be Thursday, November third at seven PM at the Community Center. And our next youth, Police Youth Coalition meeting will be Tuesday, December twentieth at Community Center at seven PM as well. Um Halloween is coming up, obviously, and the curfew will be in place unless I'm accompanied by an adult, kids under the age of seven PM are under a curfew on Sunday, October thirtieth and Monday, October thirty-first between the hours of eleven PM and six AM. Believe it or not, there's certain municipalities, I neighbor, neighboring municipalities that actually execute um Halloween, go-to-door trick-or-treating. They set a time. They, they say, okay, you can go trick-or-treating in the town between the hours of three and seven PM. So it avoids kids coming up at nine o'clock knocking on people's doors and, and, and doing that. You have that, so um just as far as there. EWI enforcement, our march across the town board executing intermunicipal agreement that provides funding for the police department to provide additional patrols that were directed at motorists that operate motor, motor vehicles while under the influence of drugs or alcohol. Enforcement period will begin November eleventh and continue to January first, twenty twenty-three. Um Chief, I'll let you speak on the investigation to the death of Christopher, please. Uh to our parks and what they've been up to, they've started placing uh mode servicing in Dorf, in Dorf Park that's just being built. It's still waiting for the shade canopy to be here on any day now. They've completed the retaining work by the soccer shed and landscape and planted fifteen flowering trees between Circleville Park, Circle Park and the town hall. They've added numerous perennials in Little League Bed, Circleville Area's Washington Heights Park sign, Stevens Avenue Park and Memorial Park bed, and they'll be adding some more to the other site as soon as possible. Electric and lighting is complete in the police department expansion and there's painting and installing both. The flooring now. New emergency management office should be ready next week, followed by a new discovery office. Also, the town walkover soccer club college showcase will be held at the Blue Sky Sports Conference this year. On the first two weekends in November, particularly we had it at Circleville Park, we've moved it to um, the sports arena. As far as my comments, um. First, my condolences to the Riley family and the Jackson family along with um, the Thompson. And the Walsh family for the tremendous loss uh, of their family member. I had the pleasure of attending the uh, police youth coalition. I have to tell you, um. Our Rosie, everyone says our Rosie. First Larry, our husband, thank you for sharing her so much. Uh, cause she really does.
They're still charging me.
You know, there, the program that I went to was autism awareness. And just the aut- autism, autism acceptance presentation was amazing. Because you see these kids and you get to hear their story and, and one of the kids, um. Brett Anthony, I've known him since he was a little kid. And I remember this kid at the soccer field from any, you couldn't get near him. He wouldn't speak to you and um, when you see him now, he's independent. He works, I think, two jobs. He drives and goes to the mic and he gives the, the most fantastic speeches. Of his, of his growing up, of his experience and, and dealing with autism. But one of the things that they all spoke about, not only about themselves, but how people interact with them. And the one message that they sent out is that. We're people too and just treat us like normal people. And it was amazing. It was really touching. The other, the other things that they've done in there, um, Rosie and her team to stand up, speak out and say no to bullying. But we had, um, I think Congress School, we had Middletown. We had, um, the other school areas there, the principal, superintendent. And representatives from all over talking about bullying in schools and um, what they can do about it. We had their county. County has a program to, to help people deal with this. And it's a real thing. And it's not, it doesn't happen to only, um. The kid that's left out, the kid that may not be so athletic, a kid that may not be as pretty or whatever. It, it happens to all kids. No matter the age, no matter how they look. And it's, it's, it's a terrible thing, you know, internet and all the things that. Um, they expanded the world, they also hurt the world. And, and when there's no control, it's, it's just terrible things that, that you see that go on. So, um. Rosie, thank you and thanks to everyone in the program. It's amazing to see the kids uh, in that program and the progress that they made. From start to the end and even the ones that. Graduate, they get old enough, they meet the program, they'll come back and they'll come back to you. So it's tremendous. And I always say this. And I always say this. For me, it, and kids are God's sign that they're still hoping in the world. And, and that's what we're doing is giving these kids hope and, and moving them along. Enough said on that, um. Veterans, uh, on Veterans Day, you know, it's, it's, it is a special day, especially for those people that have served. And I always say this, when you see a veteran that thinks, whether you know them or you don't know them, it goes a long way to stop and thank them for their service. And their dedication to this country. Um, these pickup elections starts November seventh. Um, again, folks put leaves on the edge of the road, still wanting property, try not to block the road or cause havoc to those cars passing that. Also, if you don't want to leave the leaves on the edge of the road, you can bag them and put those bags on the edge of the road and we will pick up those bags. Um, outside of that, stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'll start with highway. Um, for the month of October, we've been installing shoulders on all the roads that we paved this year. And some of the roads that we paved last year. Uh, we paved Old Timer's Road and we'll be paving the rest of Banduza Road on this Friday. Currently working on getting all the trucks and equipment ready for the winter season and also getting equipment ready for leaf season. As Eric had mentioned, we'll start picking up leaves the week of November seventh. And would also like to remind everyone that the highway garage is open on Saturdays from eight till twelve. Uh, for brush and weed drop off. You must enter the yard off of Kiesel Road and will continue to keep it open until December third. Quick note on that. We only do the roadside pickup of the leaves in the water and sewer district. So. I mean, a lot of the area that I represent is, is uh, not in the district. But again, you can always bag it up, bring it over to the highway garage and they'll, they'll be open from eight to twelve on Saturdays. Um, Veterans Affairs, it's Veterans Day coming up. Um, it was mentioned earlier, post eleven eighty-one. Having their uh, ceremony at the Elks Club. At eleven o'clock, um. Post one fifty-one as well. Uh, this year I'll be attending one fifty-one. I go every other year. And I'll be a guest speaker at post one fifty-one this year. The wall committee I mentioned earlier, we're having our second annual fall dinner. Uh, Tuesday, November fifteenth from six to nine at the uh, golf course. And the cost is one hundred dollars. Of course. Everything that we earn goes right to paying off our debt of twelve thousand dollars that we have left. But. Um, if you're interested in attending and you can always give me a call, eight four five three two three one nine one three. If you don't answer, please leave a message. I will call you back. Comments? Election Day is also coming up. A week from Tuesday, um. You know. It's your duty to vote. Do you like the guy or gal or you don't like the guy or gal? Well, vote. You know, um. You like how it's, how things are going? Well, vote. Don't like how things are going? Well, vote. There, there's no excuse not to, especially now with the early voting. I mean, it's, you know. It's, it's shame on you if you don't, right? And um, if you don't vote, nobody wants to hear you belly. So please get out and vote. And my last comment will be about Halloween. Please drive carefully. You know, kids walking around the neighborhoods. Just, you know, slow down, be careful and.
They're making a Halloween party.
Okay, Michael is letting me know that tomorrow we're having our trunk or treat. Uh, from four to six. So soon by, yeah, you know what? Maybe go last anyway, George. Right back at you, pal. Um. I'll let George elaborate on that. But uh, drive carefully. Thank you.
I, I just have one last thing to add. Um, we spoke about the leaf pickup and, and we spoke about when it starts November seventh. If your interest is to when your area, your neighborhood is going to get picked up, the schedule is online. If you go to the town website. You can click on the calendar and we'll tell you exactly the, the week that your road is scheduled to be picked up on. Of course, that's subject to the weather. If they start picking up and if the weather gets bad and you have to push off, that's the only, that, that would be the only delay.
Thank you. Wow, okay. Uh, I love it. My councilman covered a lot. Couple of things I want to say is, uh, yes, Tataro will be having a trunk or treat here at town hall, four to six. Town hall will be operating from four to six. Town hall will close tomorrow at uh, four AM. Um, we are utilizing, right next door, the lighting place for parking uh, in front of our building. Across the street, Spectrum. We will have, um, police officers out there to make sure everyone is, um. Crossing in a safe way so no one gets hurt. Uh, so that's tomorrow. Um, November fifth, junction with the CHAI, we're, um, having an event, November. The heroes. Uh, we're doing free prostate. Uh, cancer testing for active retired first responders, uh, police, fire, EMS. Um. And it's a, and this had, uh, a young lady that we recognize. Um, and she brought us a patient from cancer that's on the, um, conjunction with Louis Anderson, who. Um, some of this organization, who, um, today, um, police officer. Um, we talked about this for a while and we're gonna have it, um. November fifth from ten to two, in the building, um, please, please come out, get tested. Um, it's very treatable, it's quarter time, um, we have refreshments snacks, please come out. Then we're gonna have our holiday parade, which is on December third, uh, five AM to seven PM. We're gonna start Orange County Trust and walk up winning way up to uh, Gallery Mall where we're gonna light up the tree. Um, we have, uh. Hanukkah, uh, menorah lighting on. So we're gonna have that. It's gonna be September, December. And new for this year, we're gonna have a Ka- Kwanzaa celebration. Uh, December twenty-third, uh, it's gonna be by Bishop James Rollins, um. Here, we're also gonna have a lighting of the Kwanzaa menorah. So. Those are some of the events. Um, my comments. So yesterday I had the opportunity to present my budget. Um. If anyone didn't see it, there were some technical difficulties. Uh, we employed, we did it this morning. So it's online, uh, YouTube channel or budget presentation there. Voting, uh, everyone's talked about voting, early voting starts on Saturday. Get out there and vote. Then they, get out there, vote or this Saturday it starts. Vote. Remember we love Veterans Day. Here we are celebrating, um, the war. Um, this is a war for men who have served and this is a day for them. So, um. If anyone can attend any of the festivities on that day, so I will be, um, with eleven eighty-one on that day. Last, Halloween is Monday. Please be safe. Uh, the weather might not be. Great that day. Kids are gonna be out. Please be safe out there as it gets dark. Um, kids are walking or even adults, we don't want adults getting into the, please be safe. Um, with that, um, so, town clerk.
Thank you. And you know that our board members normally report on the different, um, departments in the town. And at budget time, um. I always like to remind what, what happens in the clerk's office and the supervisor, um, being our, our newest supervisor. Some days he comes in and I think he's wondering, what are we doing in here and, and why are people standing on the hallway? So I just thought to me, like a little snapshot, um, of what happens, um, by us. I have a, a very small staff. I have two full-time people and a part-time person, um, and myself. Um, my employees I find are probably a couple of the most dedicated, not only to the town, but dedicated to me on this. As my things are changing with my private life, they are taking over a lot of responsibility in the office and I'm, I'm certainly grateful for them. Um. We handle, I'm just gonna give you like a little snapshot. I sent a, a little document to the town board, um, because I'm confident that they will, um. Help me with my requests this year. Um. The hospital came to us in two thousand and eleven. Um, there were seven hundred and four babies born in two thousand and eleven at the hospital. That opened, I believe, on the, on August thirteenth of two thousand and eleven. Last year, there were two thousand and twenty-eight babies, um, that we processed through our office. And I don't know if anybody's familiar with that process, probably not, but about forty percent of those filings require what's printed in and all of the returning. That's another state document that has to be sent to three different agencies. Um, it's a lot of, it's a lot of paper. Death filings, unfortunately, those increased as well. We did almost a thousand, um, death files. Like fear and again, those are islands that. Are filed with different state agencies. The hospital does, uh, what they consider, um, the registrar work and then that actual. Work itself comes to us. We notify parents, we notify the different agencies. Um, we've been very busy, um, in the last year or so issuing marriage licenses. We're one of the only towns during the pandemic. Um, that service folks, um, for marriage licenses, whether they came through our window or they did it online. And I have the luxury of having, um, two lovely ladies, Mercedes and Josephine, who are both fluent in Spanish. Um, Mercedes is also fluent in French, so we're able to service, um, many couples from around the county because, um, we had. Um, a clerk's meeting here yesterday and we had about forty clerks here and. We were wondering which clerk in Orange County was sending us the most marriages, um, because they don't have the luxury of having folks. Um, that are able to translate for them. Um, Tom works with us, Tom's our courier and Tom goes, um. Pretty much everything that, that comes through the town comes through us. We do all the kinds of. Hurricane permits, familiar rentals, easy passes, dog licenses, refuse, electricity permits, pageant certificate, fee pass. All kinds of stuff. Um, when we talk about elections, um, we help coordinate the setup and the takedown of the. I believe now eleven polling sites in the town of Wackel. Um, I'm usually here till about eleven o'clock on election night because I electronically send all of the results that they have brought to us. Um, by the inspectors, um. Right now we have three notaries in my office because the town was, was gracious, um, to allow two of my employees to attend training. And then to take the test. Um, notaries are a big business. Um, I don't know that there are any that, that I don't think banks really do with that much anymore. Um, so I know on Tuesday, I think we kept track, um, Mercedes and I, and we did about seventeen notaries. Um, in the office, um, which sometimes my lady had complained and I call that dumb security. Um. Everything that comes through the town, um, comes to us. We take care of all, all, all of core records. Any of our boards, planning, zoning, um, town boards, we file all of those items. Um, and I just wanted to give a shout out tonight to my, um. Well, I call them my girls and that's probably politically incorrect, um, but I would call them my ladies. Um, Mercedes, um, has been with me several years. Josephine, um, has been with us part-time and became full-time this year, um, thanks to the town board. And, um, we also have Nancy, who is part-time, who has taken over, um, the transcribing of the minutes and is, and is doing, um. Some good deeds, um, for us that way. So I just wanted to give you like a little snapshot. Like I said, I'm confident, um. I think I got a little frustrated the other night at work session and, and I apologize if I upset anyone. Um, but, um, I'm confident that the board will see, um, what we do and, and hopefully, um, help us out with some more staffing. And, um, Chief, just a, a mention, um, one of my great town clerk friends, um, unfortunately is, is. Suffering with some serious health issue right now. Yesterday spent the day, um, in the garden ER. And she was texting me during our meeting and she was telling me different things. And she wanted to let us know that she saw probably nine different, um. I don't know what you would call them, but officers with patients, our officers with patients. And she said that she wanted you to know and the town board to know, that she's never really seen anything like that. She said they were compassionate. They were trying to, you know, help the folks. There were a couple of people that, that had some issues. Um, she told them that she was a town clerk and they said, you know, oh, we know Louisa. And, um, they checked on her. I don't know who the officer was. I'm gonna try to find out. But, um, they, she said that he did come back and they were moving her to, to admission. And, um, he said, well, I'll tell Louisa that they were taking care of you. So just pass that along to your folks that it was, um. It was really wonderful that, that they, uh, she was able to witness that. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lucy. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Uh, General DPW, uh, extremely busy past several months, um. The, uh, you know, the lack of rain allowed us to get a tremendous amount of work done this summer. So we're real happy with that. We're wrapping up some, uh, major road reconstruction paving projects. And of course, like we spoke about, um, our highway shop and our DPW, uh, highway employees are getting ready for the winter season, which is just around the corner. We just wrapped up the reconstruction of numerous catch patients and completed paving. In the Greenway Hampton Court area, including Park Row and Cindy Lane. That was a two-year project through Orange County Community Development. That was a two-year project through Orange County Community Development. Um, this year's, uh, but, uh, grant amount was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which was the maximum award for this year. Uh, so I know the folks that live over in that area are extremely, uh, happy with the work that we've done out there. Um, and as we spoke about and Supervisor made mention in his budget presentation. Um, late last year, uh, the town of Walk Hill, we actually purchased, um, a true, I guess you would call it a true commercial highway favor. Um, and we don't contract out any of that work anymore. Uh, we do it what's called forced labor, which is our own troops. And what that allows us to do, that allows us to do twice the amount of work for the same amount of money because we're not contracting it out at program rate. So a huge shout out to the, uh, all the DPW men and women that are doing that. Um, we're asking for your assistance to contain, of course, with roadside garbage, we know that's always a problem. We did also wrap up our budget, um, presentation and our budget request to the, uh, to the supervisor and now to the town board. I wanna thank Michelle Baker, my DPW administrator, all my DPW leaders and all the town of Walk Hill departments for their assistance throughout the recent budget process. We have a lot of new people, specifically in the founding area, um, and they were all awesome through the process, uh, it was new for them, um, so they really worked out very well. I wanna thank the supervisor and the town board for supporting our, uh, twenty twenty-three budget requests and also, um, our most recent, uh, DPW resolutions. We got some big projects going on. Um, the DPW budget as a whole includes highway, water, sewer parks, building maintenance, central garage, police style bus, town vehicles, well over two hundred of those. Um, that represent a budget amount of over seventeen and a half million dollars, um, out of the thirty million pound budget. Um, so we control a lot of the money, but we've got a great group of people that, uh, spend it the right way and get the work done. Updates, a reminder, all of our town parks are still open for the season, the weather has been awesome, uh, the past several days and it looks pretty good through the weekend, so get out and enjoy it. The town golf course is still open for the season, so get out there and, uh, enjoy that as well. Uh, our OAM team, we had a meeting earlier this month to discuss upcoming holiday shopping season, shopping season and potential traffic implications. We also assisted Orange County Fair Speedway with their Eastern States Weekend this past weekend, which was a huge success. And as the supervisor mentioned, the holiday parade is set for December third, uh, five P.M. lineup with a six P.M. stop, uh, step off of Winnie Way. I just wanted to talk briefly, real quick, um. We had a resident come up earlier and asked about grants, uh, specifically to water and sewer, um, because there is a lot of money out there. Currently, right now, uh, the Pleasant Avenue, Western Avenue Pump Station, which we approved tonight, that's a two million dollar grant. Uh, EFC project for the sewer treatment upgrades, uh, that's a five million dollar project, three million of that is coming back in grant. We're doing a Holtz Avenue, uh, inflow and infiltration study to two hundred and ten thousand dollar grant. We're gonna be upgrading all the water meters, uh, which is about a four million dollar project, one million of that is grant. Uh, we have an engineering planning grant for Holtz Avenue, which was thirty thousand dollar grant. And also the Kasuga Well Field Generator Project, which was a grant of eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So out of the current nine and a half million dollar grants that are being administered by the town, uh, just about six million of them are in order, so, so, good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to quickly touch upon, uh, how we're moving forward with these?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, as the town attorney mentioned, we have, um, been probably working now, I wanna say close to at least three years. On a project with the New York Power Authority and we are going to be doing an LED street lighting upgrade. Uh, right now there's well over nine hundred, I believe it is, streetlights in the town of Walk Hill. And what we're doing, we're in the process of purchasing them, they belong to Orange Rockland now. And we pay a flat rate, uh, to Orange Rockland for that power over a year's time. The general lighting district, uh, is about a hundred and ninety thousand dollar, uh, bill for all the streetlights in the town. So what we're doing through the New York Power Authority, we're actually, uh, purchasing the lights from Orange Rockland. And then a contractor will come in and they'll install all new LED streetlights, which if you see around the town, as they've been burning out, they've been replacing with LEDs. Um, they are, they are very bright, um, they're a lot better lighting. Uh, the cool part about this is that there are, there is technology where if we wanted to dim lights in certain areas at certain times, we can. There's also technology for what they call smart cities, which allows us, if we wanna put, uh, temperature monitors on the lights, we can measure the road temperatures when it comes to snow and ice and things like that. And then also there is a, uh, part of that that allows for cameras at major intersections in the town. Um, we did receive a hundred and twenty thousand dollar smart city grant out of street lighting enhancements. And we're gonna be focusing with the police department on cameras for that. But we're hoping sometime within the next six months that we're gonna change out all the streetlights in the town, um, to LEDs. So that's gonna be, it's gonna be a huge plus. Um, right now, if you have a streetlight out in your area, you give us the phone number, we go into Orange Rockland Systems, we put it into their portal. But they're, you know, they're like the rest of us, they're tasked with, you know, less and less, uh, you know, employees and staff, so sometimes it takes a while to fix a light. So hopefully, uh, with this project, um, these lights have a five-year, uh, warranty on everything on the light. And they anticipate that the LED should last, um, almost close to twenty years before that be replaced, so it's, it's a very good project. Um, payback on it, I think is about a nine-year payback, um, from what we're investing in our electric now, or we're gonna save in the LEDs. So in the course of nine years, it'll pay for itself, so, but thank you.
The total, the total contract price for the lights is about three hundred and eighty thousand. So we do have the grant money and, uh, the savings will come back to the town. And Michelle has indeed been working very hard on the project and we, we have documents signed, Supervisor has to sign a few more documents and we're moving towards closing on that project. So, thanks for the update, Bill.
Thank you.
For the mention.
Thank you.
Supervisor, always a thank you for the kind words, I'll certainly pass them on. We're so positive about the things you say with the town. And there is a new sense of oneness, especially last week, decided which is best, seemed to make us more. You stood in the buildings, something that's a Yankee, a sense of oneness in your life. A sense of delight of it. Thank you for the kind words, I'll pass them on to the officers. Thank you. So with respect to Halloween, Councilman Valentine and Supervisor, and all the members of the town board touched on, just a little bit of history. The reason the curfew's in place was years ago, going back to when I was first appointed, whenever it was here, um. First beginning, you know. There was many issues, respect to criminal mischief, youths engaging in disorderly behavior, property disruption, especially the night before, so the issue of polls on Sunday. We've done a great job because of the law, has helped us, but also the offices are out there interacting youth in a positive way. The town's providing alternatives, as we see with trumpet treatment and other things that go on throughout the town, uh, during this upcoming weekend. Including the church is having an event, as well as other different communities that provide viable alternatives for youth. So the incidents have reduced greatly because only of you every year. Nonetheless, it was a curfew, it's an option for us to enforce it, the discretion, and we do have enhanced patrols beginning on Sunday night, and there will be zero Halloween. So message is out, if anyone's willing to engage in this, to hate or, uh, it's all important, which they let it go, but otherwise, the Halloween will be policing, we need policing in this period. Eric also commented on DWI enforcement, that's important with the holidays here, we do see an uptick, unfortunately, in serious fatal accidents. And, and now with campus legalization, we anticipate there could potentially be more problems. We do, and are partly, we are re drug recognition expert program now, so we do have all the on patrol that are able to test on the roadside for controlled substances. And we will be promoting regulations throughout the holiday season, once again, in this period of road safety, travel, and things in within our town. With respect to, um, I'll make a quick comment on this, um, with respect to the shooting that occurred on June twelfth, twenty twenty-one. On Shep Road, they have a U.A.M. all the police officers rammed, that resulted in, um, on duty violence is charged that ultimately related to the death of Christopher Van Clee. On the New York Executive Law, Section Seventy-B, the New York State Attorney General's Office investigates these incidents. And on September thirtieth, the Attorney General issued a very comprehensive report, among other things, they found that Boston's actions were reasonable. The report is available on the town of Walk Hill Police Department website or the New York State Attorney General, for anyone who'd like to read further about the incident. Once again, unfortunate, but it was deemed to be reasonable, his action, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Just before you go to the public, um, just following up on the comments that, uh, the supervisor and councilman all made, Chief. Sound like a broken record sometimes, but I, I like to remind everyone every year for Halloween. Whether you have young kids, whether you have even older kids and, you know, early teens, you know, finishing up their trick-or-treating, please check their candy before they eat it. Because there are, unfortunately, some individuals who, uh, for some reason alter the candy or they make it unsafe for the children. I had an incident like this when my kids were younger. And my kid was twenty now, but something happened when they were younger and their, uh, trick-or-treating days. And it just reinforces that we have to always be vigilant. As, as everyone up here said, safety is everything, safety is everything, especially with our children, because they're everything to all of us. So please, just take a quick look, do a quick inspection, make sure there's nothing funny, packaging wasn't altered, something, you know, recognized. And, uh, that way, everyone have a great Halloween, so thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna have some anticipation on any topic, three minutes. So first off, we zoom, because we started with audience before. Anyone on Zoom, please raise your hand, state your name. Anyone in the audience? Mr. Cody?
Everybody knows who I am, so I don't have to say that. First of all, I wanna thank Billy and all the guys for the highway they do a fantastic job. Number one. Check roads, because you need a sign, stated. Just, I mean, maybe somebody will go out there and look at that and replace it because a lot of people are coming into our town. The other thing is, uh, they're right up in the town a lot, there's a lot of new signs put up in the telephone poles. Some people don't really live in town, all of us are like shit. These people, uh, it's terrible. So maybe, maybe, um, somebody, or. Take them down. And see a lot of signs stuck in the ground, uh, and that. That they're advertising signs, that you can use something about it. The other thing is, is a, uh. I'm not, I'm bringing saying, um. The committee, the town of Walk Hill Veterans Council Committee, all committee, is hosting the, the candy chief sandwich. And that is not gonna free for a cup of coffee for all veterans, but also doing it at twenty to the front in New Hampton. All you gotta do is just knock in, pick up a sandwich, and you guys get a coffee, it's free to all veterans. But also, we need that Texas Roadhouse family. We, we hope that people come by, put their shirt, hat, whatever, their money goes through the wall, so we're gonna be there all day for that. We're just sending these things that, and I would. The committee is doing a great job and, uh, working very hard. If you're running downtown and you see a sign on the pole, take two minutes, take it down. Get to town hall and throw it in the garden. Thank you very much to the town.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience?
Good evening, everybody. The gentleman I think was speaking from the first seat about the water. I can say that too. It turns out. Yeah, okay. I can say that too, I don't drink the water. Then I heard Mr. Goss, and then followed up by Johnson about the water, and I, I never knew that, all the time I was treated, I wanted to. And I figured, okay, maybe I am, or maybe the water is good, but the gentleman, I'll afford it. Probably have the expected taxpayer, educated, everything they said. Because then I drink the water. Hey, man. The record. From Mr. Cody said about the signs, I thought we had an ordinance against that. He had a head of lit, to put up a sign. Do we? Why don't we follow it up? And I'm not being arbitrary, please, I understand. I don't, I just don't understand why we don't, you know, use the laws that we have, carry them down.
They do come down and they come back up, they come down and come back up.
Well, then they're gonna be fined. Yes, okay, then they should be fined. And it, and I don't mean a town of fifty, no, a hundred dollars fine, I'm talking about. You're destroying our town. This is a fantastic town, I've been here for fifty years. Never had a problem with, never had a problem anywhere with this in this town. And I'm seeing it go to hell in the hands of this, that exists quite there. I had more to say, but I'm gonna say that one. Speak to me. It's about, I have not said what I wanna say. Yeah, we move. Thank you.
Good to be here.
Thank you. Good seeing you all too.
I'm John, I'm John. Everybody in the board. Anyone on Zoom? The audience.
Hi, everybody, here and I'm, I'm Zoom. Uh, I'm John Odger, I'm from the town historian's, uh, office. Uh, first I wanna thank the town board for naming the historian's office in the name of the late, great historian, Dottie Hunt Ngrasius. I was absent at the time away on family business and couldn't do the work for it. And he, she was a historian for thirty-five years in the town. I also wanted to thank the town board for appointing me as a historian, a pillar of agency created by the passing of the. Also, our town's historical department puts on a monthly program of history information. Uh, the town's monthly historical program will be on Saturday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at two P.M., here in Town Hall. Uh, the program will be presented by the dynamic duo of Andy Mills and Dr. Fred Isits. Piled five letters, three words regarding local information from World War One, World War Two, and the Vietnam War.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone on Zoom? Audience?
I'm Nick Ag, I live on Sage Road. Um, I was here a few months ago and I used some historic info about thirty-one acre New York City landfill in front of my house, which I have two boxes of materials buried there. Um, I see some concerns about unpermitted work that's currently ongoing. Um, after the meeting, a couple concerned town, and, and confirmed that what I reported wasn't permitted. Um, but the town, it's definitely fine, but you might not know if it's earning my phone call, so unfortunately, I'm back here tonight. I did not have a prepared statement last time, just went by deep prepared statement, um, just a laundry, uh, walk up last part in. That's taken very long, um, so I narrowed down, um, very brief statement of oversight. So as you're aware, EPA suing Mark Ford for over two hundred and twenty million dollars plus land reclamation. His force training facility on Slaughter Road was built in violation of the back of shoes and federal wetland. Force track and local structures will have to be removed in Slaughter Road lot, EPA's vessel. Um, acres of illegal fill, also buried in the wetlands will have to be moved to Sony Ford Lot, Lot Lot, and that's directly in front of my family path. So, Mark Ford owns two lots, totally got a hundred and fifty acres on Slaughter Road and Sony Ford Road. My family owns a seventeen acre lot on Sage Road, it's in the sub lot, so we're very affected by everything that's gone on in the lot. Um, unfortunately, not too many of the revenue. So, um, my family has a lawsuit against Mark Ford for major issues that arose from uncommitted operations that are going on there. The town of Walk Hill was fully aware of a lot of these uncommitted activities involving McCarry's landowners on Mark Ford's properties. So I FOIA requested, um, many documents from town of Walk Hill, and they were never supplied. Um, I did get a lot, but not most of what I asked for. It's included documents that prove Mark Ford and McCarry were operating in violation of current laws and violation of mobile software orders. Um, the town clerk's office was only able to write a very small number of further materials, and I don't know if they ignored or they just weren't supplying the request, um, but I never got one. George Sanano, you've also complained of similar experiences at the town clerk's office when you complained to the company in the house. Without not getting a responsive FOIA. Um, due to this, um, Michael Susskind, my attorney, he secured the town of Walk Hill for all of the records involving Mark Ford's properties. The town was also subpoenaed for all the records involving McCarry's landscaping. And also served was subpoenaing on McCarry's landscaping for all their records, including the massive amount of work that the town on Mark Ford's properties. Mark Ford was, of course, also subpoenaed for this permitting of records, so. What was discovered in front of the second bathroom is very concerning. Um Walco supervisor set up since beginning, made excuses for and table or enabled unpermitted activities on Mark Ford's lots for years. Walco building inspectors and building portions, they falsified or completely ignored reports of unpermitted activities that were going on in that block. So this includes something in bearing of New York City waste, unpermitted mining, unpermitted materials processing, unpermitted sales materials, unpermitted material storage, unpermitted businesses, and multiple other violations. So even after these issues stop work orders, the Town of Walco buildings, uh inspectors and supervisors still knew work was going on and continued when they should have been impressed. Um there was illegal something going on, this property was going to be in two thousand sixteen when the D C was cut it down. Um at that point, um the town supervisor, the U D W supervisor, um the highway supervisor, they were all fully aware of the unpermitted going operations on from my personal and the upper banks. So I sent the number to you, William Grasser.
All right, sorry, that's um.
It's not ten minutes?
Yes, it is.
I'll be back in a minute. I can submit this whole thing, I've actually submitted all the jury toward him, he's aware of everything, so I will absolutely submit it um. Directly to you, thank you.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? State your name and address, please.
My neighbors didn't just give you a handout, so I have some examples for you board members to. Um look at for me. I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, don't be nervous, everyone. Go on, David.
Oh, oh my lord, okay, I am standing here before the board to help me. Deborah Farnow at Eight Ladder Road. I'm standing here before the board to help me and my other neighbors, the pastor is at Six Ladder Road, have a vote, which is not allowed in a residential area. In the zoning book, chapters two forty nine, it defines livestock, which includes goats, please see example one. You also need twenty acres of livestock, example two. On September twenty fourth, Mrs. Pastore wrote a formal request to have an emotional support goat for her husband, example three. The town clerk told her she hasn't seen the formal request, she would give it to the town board along with the town attorney to remove the letter, example four. So the pastors knew the goat was not legal, instead of waiting for the town board and attorney, they went ahead and brought the goat home on October tenth. Before the re- sorry. I believe the reason for this was because they think it would be harder for that town to remove it. I'm sure our town is not okay with people breaking the law. I don't know if you've ever heard of those screams, but that's what they do. It sounds like a small child is being hurt, it woke me up, and now I can't enjoy my backyard because of their screaming. Everyone gets nervous when anybody talks about emotional or mental health. But let's face it, anyone can call an animal an ESA, an emotional support animal nowadays. Weeks ago, Mrs. Pastore told the other neighbors that Mr. Pastore is having anxiety.
Yes, yes, I'm going to ask you, please, not publicly discuss someone's health. Can you discuss the goat issue, but. Please don't discuss anyone's personal health situation.
Okay, sorry. Um, okay. Mr. Pastor bottled wine out of his house, selling it online along with the going to craft beers and food market. The weekend of October fifteenth and sixteenth, Mr. Pastor was away for the way for a whole weekend. I have video showing that his work car was not there, but the goat is in his backyard, not with him. According to the website. For ESA, all domesticated animals may qualify. The only requirement is that it must be manageable in public and do not breed and use it in or around the home, example five. I'm sorry, oh, sorry. Uh before the pastors could have chosen a different animal that would not disturb the neighborhood, I don't think that myself and my neighbors should now be. Stressed out with having this kind of animal next door and hearing horrible screams yelling. I see the pastors running back and forth trying to keep the goat quiet. If this is approved, I'm sure it was not, they won't care that it's screaming. I also have signatures from most of my neighbors asking in the town to remove the goat. We hoping the board is sympathetic to all of us in our needs, example number six. Will I or any of my neighbors have trouble selling our homes because they're building next door? The fall, um and it's fall right now, and you can smell the goat, what happens when it's ninety degrees out? I know that there are places that goat, um that people go to, when you stress for goats, that people are farmed. There has to be a line you're on somewhere, can anyone get any animal they want, will they get another goat or a donkey? Would any of you be okay with them having a farm animal? If this is the thing that I think is going to open up a can of worms, please help me and the neighbors so we can have peace and quiet again. I'd like to just play you just like a three second. Can I take my neighbors two minutes? Want to play it? Want to play it? Sure.
Anyone on Zoom? Matt, are you going to speak or are you going to play the audio?
Play the audio, it's a fair game.
I would like you to speak and say something before you play the audio.
Sure, I would love to speak. Uh Nomi Kelly, uh Laddy Road, and I just have to confirm everything that Debbie just said. It's horrible, it sounds like crybaby, and I wouldn't do that.
I looked at my.
That's me talking about.
Sounds like you.
So we have the town.
Thank you. That's my dad, you want to speak on it?
Yeah, so um. It, everything that that was read is is to the fact, I I will say, um to use Mrs. Kelly's words, the town was proactive the minute we got the letter. Um making us aware, just saying it was, there was no um. A formal medical, medical attached to it or anything else. Um we avoided to the attorney's attention, uh and we met with the building inspector and uh. Mrs. Kelly, Nomi, if I may, uh you called me on the sixteenth, we spoke a little, a few days after that, I I. And I I may be aware that we did take action. Um I couldn't remember what date that was, so I I said I'd call you back, and I did call you within an hour. And um the town has taken a very serious action in committing an order to remedy. And that was, I think, a week or two before we had a discussion, and so it's um. It's, this whole situation is unfortunate because from my perspective, we live and we're neighbors, we live in a very close area, we talk to our neighbors. If you have a situation, the first thing you should do is is talk to your neighbors and find out, this is going to be an issue if you don't do it. So I think it's somewhat selfish in that sense, and if I may, but the other thing is that. This isn't now in the hands of the court, so they have an order to remedy, they have a court date, you want to say something? Yeah, people watch me that that I don't say something wrong, that because it's in the court, and he's saying, Eric, don't say this. So we have, we have additional information that that um we're looking at, and so. I think everyone on this board and and the attorney and building inspector is on on the mindset that it's not allowed. We have a law that says it's not allowed, uh and so our rep will finish, because you're giving you a lot.
Yeah, I just would like to say a couple of words, uh. There is a due process and everyone has a right. I understand, I can't even imagine what the residents going through. Our building inspectors went out there, we understand. Now it's in the hands of the court, and there's a due process, it's a procedure that everyone in this town has a right. Be with it or not, there there is a procedure and they have, they have to vote it out. Cannot just go out there and just take the goat, even though it's not allowed in that zone, I understand that. There is a procedure, there is a process.
We're working on the issue, not just with the building department, but other steps have been taken. With myself and the clerk's office, and I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you, anybody on Zoom?
I will say one other thing is, I think there's a value in in recording that you have, there's a value in in the observation that this is supposed to be a specific used animal and. You know, the separation in the time and that you've identified, and we know it that as well, so.
Thank you. Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Audience?
So uh this. My name is Zigam Mitchell, and I shared last month, I'm I'm actually running this town and uh, I'm helping individuals that are in this town and. You know, in the audience, and if you want me to come up there sometime, encourage a little bit to make the shows and support. Um I I've shared with the supervisor and and the town, I before that, I'm I'm speaking for a hand agreement, but. But this is, this process is moving on, and uh, you know, they, I I've been business with them, I work with them, and they they're they're reaching out to me and. At the time, I'm helping through the process and and I'm showing them, like, you know, they actually can be the other voice, yeah, they have the right to speak and share concerns and. And whatever the town can do, that's just, you know, I'm sure they develop where they can, and uh and. I've I've been supporting a lot of boards, and I'm seeing those things and and developing and and watching you guys tonight. We've been doing it for the public and how how involved, very impressive, you know, being from outside this county is great, but. You know, I wish I'd see that more, especially where I where I live, and um. I just hope that, I mean, he, he, I'm Walco, and I just hope that he could be heard and and specifically, of course, um. You hear everybody in the morning for him, and uh their their request, they were asking for consideration, they are doing stations to develop a point as well. And uh they have information and backup, and when I go, I'm sure that you're, and I'm being there for some of this town, and uh.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? My answer, please state your name and address.
Uh dear town board, my name is Vado Meraka, and I'm the resident of Fort Hill, uh fourteen men. Uh I'm here on behalf of myself and my community, we need your heart to protect this town. Uh we don't want any more gas stations, I think we have enough of those, we could do something uh else better. Uh I request that you all protect us against the unnecessary new gas station, we all need your heart, thank you so much.
Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone in the audience? Having said that, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sorry, one second.
On hold. Thank you, have a good night.